Put the flag.
Let's read it, sue the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with no end to be crushed.
Remind everybody this is only a work session. So we're gonna go right in and.
For work.
We have one announcement for November 3rd, 2015 general election. Tom DiMascio, Ronald Grillo, and Sherry Jarvis, their terms on the board will expire. So we'll be up for the election. Finance Committee, Mr. Flick.
Yes, Eddie Bevler, he takes exception to it, but this is important.
Also just to let you know.
Yeah.
So there.
Any questions?
Education and curriculum.
Anybody have any questions about one, two, or three?
If I could just pursue his permission on number three. We have an ed curriculum meeting, was that yesterday? Seems like a week ago. Yesterday. And there had been some concern about the delayed opening schedule. This year, if you recall, we had changed it so that we came in later and the end time was the same as the regular day of school. So ed curriculum is proposing to the whole board that we extend that even greater and just add two hours to the regular start time of school. So for example, the four through twelves usually come in at eight-ten. They would come in at ten-ten. So that gives time for our teach, our staff that are out of town enough time to get here, but it gives a nice extended school time for the students to really get a nice education on those shorter days. Okay? So I'll write that up formally for the public meeting, but that's what was discussed.
And number one, it's no additional cost because the first year of a club's existence, the teacher volunteers, and then the second year, and from then on, it goes on to the budget.
It's kinda strange that the first year they don't volunteer, but they won't volunteer after that. What was that?
What happened was, that's back from 2010, we had to cut 1.6 million dollars from the budget. And Mr. Grillo and Mr. DiMascio were there, and they'll recall that there was a very heated until approximately 1:00 AM meeting about what to cut. Freshmen at sports were on the table, kindergarten was on the table, and then we looked at club stipends and did away with every single club in the district with the exception of the national recognized honor societies, the FBLA, and so on and so forth, and made it an agreement with the teachers' union that if they wanted a club reinstated, that they needed to hand in a packet that was a description of the club, a petition signed by a minimum of 20 students that were interested in the club, volunteer for one year, show that that interest stayed through the duration of that year, and then be put on.
And we also changed the, we were gonna change it on as a sport, but we just mentioned this two seconds ago, when we actually added a club instead, and I think that's more a sport than we do that.
Right. And some of this is going to be worked through negotiations as well, because there are some other changes that are being proposed, and we're looking to possibly make some student leaders, which we feel, Shawna and I feel, would be great on student resumes when they're applying for scholarships and for colleges, to make them the lead of the club.
Chris, did we make any?
Changes in the job.
Did we make any changes in that job description?
Yes. So the changes in the job description were that we removed, we added some verbiage because there were questions about the attendance, so we added some verbiage so that everyone reading it understood that that was attendance for out-of-district special ed students, as well as chronic absenteeism within house special ed students. We also removed the remedial and ESL responsibilities. Okay? So this will need us.
Are we gonna get a copy of the change or not?
You did it?
No.
Okay. Then you will get it on Monday. And that needs two readings. So that'll be on Monday, and then that'll be on again next month. Okay. And the committee, which was made up of Shawna DiMarco, who headed the committee, Joe Bastola, Jamie Stevens, and Peggy Romano and Lisa Klein, met due to Dr. Pfeiffer and me by this Friday, is their top three candidates and a rationale and rubric for each. And then at that point, I had it due Friday, so that Monday, we could dialogue about how you want to proceed. Do you want to see all three based on their recommendations? Obviously, Dr. Pfeiffer and I are gonna interview all three. Do you just want one candidate? You want two? But we'll talk about that once Dr. Pfeiffer and I analyze what's handed to us. We'll speak about that on Monday. Okay?
Related to ed curriculum, I won't be here on Monday, I'll be flying, but I was hoping if someone could recognize the passing of Mr. Sandler.
Yeah.
Mark Sandler, who taught here for over 30 years, I think. My mother had him, I had him, and he was an excellent, excellent, excellent.
He's just an excellent human being.
We are.
Just an excellent human being.
But he was an outstanding math teacher, and I had him for Algebra I and then Advanced Math at the end, and if it wasn't for him, I don't think it would've made it to college. If someone could just recognize him, I appreciate that.
We also talked, do you want to talk a little bit about other things? We talked about the STEAM program in grade three. Do you want me to talk about it?
Yes, that's my notes.
Okay. So we also talked about a proposal that was moved forward by one of our third grade teachers to take on teaching all of the science and working in some STEAM, which is now, STEM is already outdated, they've added the art to it, so when you hear me talking about STEAM, that's what we're referring to. So she would be doing some STEAM activities during the day and altering her schedule to take on a zero period, so that any third grader that makes a certain percentage on the rubric would be afforded a gifted and talented STEAM program prior to the school day starting. So that's something we're excited to offer, as well as a robotics club that we're gonna pilot for one week, the end of this year. It's gonna be the first week in June. I want to do it after testing was over. It's free to us, and it's something I'd like to incorporate a little bit more next year, but we're gonna offer it to grades six and seven, the first 20 that apply, and it's going to take place in the high school library and media center, because they have to use the computers to actually program the robots, and then the tables on the library side to interact with them. If anybody wants to look it up in YouTube, it's called the NAO, N-A-O. And if you'd like, I can also do a presentation for you on them at a board meeting. I could borrow the robot, and I could show you some of the things that take place with them.
What I'd like to see even more, take a look at is the A and B board.
Isn't that great? Yeah. Actually, we could, if you want to have one of our work sessions at one of the schools, we could actually do Jefferson School, because it's handicapped accessible, and then we can take anyone on the elevator up to the science lab to see it. So if we want to do one of the, one of the meetings there, we could. Do you want me to?
There's another program, excuse me, I spoke to David about it. My son is involved in a civil air patrol in Teterboro Airport. It's from 12 to, to infinity, actually, but further, I think that's the programs, it's from 12 to 21. And there's a program with the, this is a, it's actually, this is like junior ROTC for the Air Force, it's an Air Force run program, but there's a program through the United States Air Force Association that I'm a member of, and there is, for the children, a program called Cyber Patriot. And cyber defense is one of the biggest weaknesses in our national defense, and the government is starting to try to get into the educational system as much cyber training as possible, so they have this program called Cyber Patriot. And I asked David if there were any of our labs that had IBM PC compatible computers, because we can't use Macs on this. And he said that there was, and those are, whatever, like this position for some period pickup computers, and for, for possibly the squadron, maybe some interactive workshops in the district to run the program here if we could.
We also have them at the high school.
It starts, oh, that'd be great, because it starts in April, we would need access at least probably a few times a month for a year. It begins in April and then to March.
Could you give me more information?
I'd be interested.
Okay.
And we would have a team of about five or six kids out of the squadron, they'll, they'll be high school level, and what did I have to say? It's just a, it's a tremendous program and an opportunity, I think, for kids from Lynnhurst to see what's, what's going on outside of the school district that's not sports related as well. So this is, my son loves it, he's already fallen for it.
Oh, wow.
He's up for a collared trip. I was just gonna mention that Susan, you went to this poetry slam? How did that go?
It's all my gosh. It was magnificent, to hear what our kids are capable of putting and communicating. And I was so moved by some of them, we were tears, and we had Gia Grillo as one of our readers. It was, it was very moving. It was a moving experience. And I must tell you that I hope to go again next year, and I wish more people, if they're available, would come. We have many talented children in this, in our school system, and we would recognize them. Copy of the poetry slam, I did leave home, but.
I could get copies for all the board members.
It was, it was wonderful.
Was it taped or?
Yes.
Can we share clips or anything?
As a matter of fact.
I'm trying to put it, I'm trying to put it on, there's something going on with YouTube, so I've been trying to do it the last three days.
Patrick started a YouTube channel for us, which I'm gonna be forwarding the address to all of you, so that, we did a great presentation, I have four fabulous faculty presentations at the last, at the last parent academy, and he was able to show how he put, there's board meetings on there, there's, the plays are on there, coming attractions to our plays, the poetry slam, anything that's taped internally. So we're piloting it right now, you all will be the first to get the address to it, and then we'll see how live we're gonna, going to take it. But it's better than hosting on our site, because there's no, there's no restriction as far as the, the time that, that takes up, and it's easier to just upload all right to there, so that's something really exciting.
We don't have a town channel. We don't get.
We looked into that.
You mean, I think we probably can start. Through BIOS, you mean?
Yeah.
I think if you just make some contacts with them, because they, they die for material.
It's all we call it, is to play one night, a basketball game, dodgeball game.
And now actually, the machines, as soon as you turn your QV on, they go to that BIOS one. If you talk to them, they'll, they'll be interested.
Another thing I'd like to compliment, Mrs. Klein, as the supervisor of Lincoln Arts, for orchestrating this, Mrs. Pastor, Mr. Schneider, and Mr. Belmont. So thank you to all.
Gee, I love it.
Gee goes on.
He actually goes on.
Yeah. We also did a lot of talking at ed curriculum about the changes to the PSAT. There's going to be a presentation, we're gonna actually have two ed curriculum meetings next month, and one is going to be just about the SAT, it's changing back to the 1,600-point assessment. It's going to be aligned to the PAR, so the, the whole philosophy of the assessment is changing. It will be computer-based. Some, something really exciting that we spoke about is that they are merging with Khan Academy, that's looking to level the playing field and offer free courses and remediation and help for all students. And we often, we offer the Princeton Review currently, and what ed curriculum had talked about was giving the high school the ability, and this would have to go through finance, and if we could, you know, talk about it for next year possibly, is offering a $100 give back to any student who attends all of the Princeton Review classes. We have six students enrolled currently, which is a high enrollment for us, because even with the reduced rate, it's costly. The feedback is, it's costly for the families. So the research has proven that your scores increase based on your attendance in those workshops. So what we had thought was, we tossed around different ideas and came to the compromise that for 100% attendance, maybe the board could give the family back $100 of, of what they had paid for the course.
How much was it?
It's five fif, 450. 450. So if that's something we can talk about for next year. Now, again, this is something that would only be a one or two year, because the new SAT is, is expected to be out in two years, and the Princeton Review's sole purpose is to teach strategy. The new assessment is not strategy-based, it's content-based, so I'm not quite sure how much longer Princeton Review will, will be around unless they change their strategy, no one intended. But that would be something maybe for the next two years we could work into.
Tracy, you may want to mention about the leveling of grades three, four, and five.
Yes. So we're going to be having, April 30th is our next ed curriculum meeting, and that's where we're gonna be focusing on the SAT. And ed curriculum doesn't know this yet, but I checked some dates, and we're looking at the beginning of April. I thought maybe we could couple it up with our work meeting, because I know it's, the evenings are easier for Mr. Avrastado, so if we can meet prior, prior to this, I'm sorry, for the SAT. April 30th, I'd like to discuss the leveling. We need to have a, a professional agree-to-disagree conversation about leveling. There seems to be a great deal of conflict in the ideas of the board and the administration as a whole, as to where to start leveling. So we want everybody involved in that conversation, so that all of the members of the curriculum committee, as well as the members of the administrative team, can have an honest conversation about what the research shows and what personal opinions are as to when we should start leveling and why, and hopefully come to a consensus, or at the very least, a compromise at the end of that meeting. And that would take place during the day on April 30th.
As long as it's not because parents are upset that their child wasn't in one class or another.
Right. Right. No, no.
What did we say? We were gonna, we were going to level years ago?
We are leveling currently grades four through eight.
Okay. So we're just more or less following through on the program.
Right. And some folks are requesting to level down to three, which I, I believe there was a miscommunication between leveling and departmentalizing. So, but the, the administrators are suggesting we don't level until sixth grade, so we really need to have this conversation. I don't want to speak for any party. I want everyone to be able to come together with the proper data, with the proper research, and have those conversations, so that everyone can understand where each side of the debate are coming from, and like I said, hopefully come up with a compromise at the very least.
What do you want to do this April 30th?
April 30th. If you want us to change the time.
During the day, right?
That was our regularly scheduled meeting at 11:00.
That's fine.
I thought it was easier to get two people here in the evening than it would be to get six, so that's why we did the SAT at night and this during the day.
One, another related note is, we talked a few weeks ago about doing something online so we know when it's.
I did it already, it's been up for two months.
For the address, for.
Oh, ADV.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's up. Log on right now, lynnhurstschools.net.
Because it was a big thing after the break just now.
No, no, I got that off the next day. If you do lynnhurstschools.net, and right here under shortcuts, it says today is A, either A.
She doesn't ask about.
Today is A.
How long?
And A is gold, and B is blue.
Put Linda Nurse in.
Yeah, yeah.
Long Island.
Right on the left-hand side, under shortcuts. Today is A.
You got one of those slow phones.
It's called a Grillo phone, so where is it, I'm sorry?
Right on the left-hand side, under shortcuts, it's a big gold A.
Oh, okay, beautiful. So that's, today is literally, so as soon as midnight comes, it switches back and forth, and that's what it is.
My technology.
Beautiful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just trying to let this, I'm very happy, can I make up?
Please don't forget to check the website for the, the postcards. They, we post them up there, there's copies in each of the schools, they're still going out and about to the community, so we get some great information. The results of the communication survey are on there. Our second survey is posted. It's about how safe the, the parents feel their students are in relationship to harassment intimidation and voting.
So that will get people coming here in time. All right. Tools and regulations.
Any questions?
Okay. Business. We have no issues with Apex donating back to us?
Well, there's another donation that will be added on for, number four will be a donation of $2,500 from Mr. Danny Label to the Lynnhurst Track.
What kind of piano was that?
It's a Steinway.
Some nice, it was just a.
No.
Beautiful.
Beautiful. And the woman, the woman also donated the mover to bring it to the high school.
That's even.
If you wanted it at your house, do anything to get it.
I have one piece in New. I have one of those in high school. I just want piece in New Business, and I'll say it again on Monday night, but the members of the township and the Board of Education went to the New Jersey Sports Exhibition Authority last week on Wednesday, and myself and Commissioner John Montillo spoke about the housing that's going up in the Meadowlands area, below east of Orient Way, and we imposed that housing without any type of infrastructure improvements. We let them know that it's extremely dangerous for students to be walking up, like, or Rutherford Avenue, the whole busing down there, and all the costs that are associated with having to safely transport those students up to our schools, and also the additional costs to burn, the actual students coming into our schools.
Chris, I want to thank you for doing that, because we really haven't, as a township, have been advancing with them since the End Cap situation exploded. And I don't think anybody has really been pushing them, and they had a few complexes go up that have been approved, and it's not since this busing problem where we actually really woke up ourselves and said we have to do something.
What I'll say is that we sat through their testimony of the builder and their lawyer, and, I mean, they were right on it. The lawyer was going point by point, he was, he was perfect. I mean, he had great presentation early on. Commissioner Montillo and I both got up to speak, and that lawyer came back to close, and he did nothing but stutter for the entire rest of the time. Came right over to us as soon as the, the presentation was over, and with his whole entourage of professionals, and asked what it was they could do to, to, to help our district out, because they realized there was a significant issue and burden that we, we were basically paying for. So, if nothing else, can you get them to the table and have a good conversation?
We know the town has been invited for years, I mean, that authority doesn't exist anymore, but to the Meadowlands Commission for their meetings.
We never were, as far as.
We never was, but I was invited on behalf of the township from the commission, because the township wasn't sending anybody, because that guy was thought was useless. However, with the Sports and Exhibition Authority now taking over, and the township really not taking the lead down the Meadows as they were in the past, maybe the board should look into attending some of these commission meetings on a regular basis, and electing a representative, whether it's the president or, or someone else who's available.
No, I think it's great, I think.
So why don't we, someone should reach out to them and literally find out.
Yeah, Tommy, these commissions make it very clear they're not that interested in having people at their meetings, but they make them, Tommy, during the day, in the morning, where most people are working. It's intentional.
But that's because they're paid, I think, they're paid, and that's why they're there. They're, they're eight to four, nine to five, they don't want to be there. I, I think it's actually a laziness on their part. I mean, I agree with you that it's them who wants it that way, but I think it's them who wants it that way, because they don't, they don't need to come there. So we could.
To Joe's point, there was probably, I want to say 13 or 14 people in the room. There was probably six of us from the town, six from the attorneys, Mr. Croce was there as well for the record, and then the Powell sat out. So there were six and six, and then I think there was one other person that came to speak. But it wasn't well attended.
Right. So, but, but you know, you don't, you don't get hurt if, if you don't speak, so kudos, like I said, to you and, and the entourage who went. But we should make that legal. I'm sure they're gonna have regular meetings with the requests going out to the townships, and that we should request, request for an invitation as well, as a board.
With, with the former Meadowlands Commission, that property down there, it is square miles worth of property, is zoned, light industry, commercial. So every time there is a housing proposal, there has to be an adjustment to the zoning, to their zoning, to their zoning. So they're well aware that that was not the original intent. Now, does the Sports and Exhibition Authority really care? Probably not, because they keep changing their zoning. So it really is a difficult situation, because everything down there is rentals. Okay? There is no townhouses, there aren't any condos, there aren't any single-family homes, it is all rentals. No, Avalon is rentals. Everything down there is rentals. And that's a lot of units.
There's 816 units right now.
That's a tremendous amount of units.
We have more kids than they expected with Ed Cap, I think, was that?
And that's where the housing market is going now. All new construction, if you notice, is rentals. You'll see that, any, any complex is rentals. Condos are no longer fashionable, I guess.
Yeah, rentals are quick and dirty for the contract, if they just build them and they only take one away. Condos are two.
So this is gonna be a big problem. But anyway, okay. I know we took, can I see this, Jeff? An unofficial polling at the Commissioners' Board of God meeting for the bowling, and we said that we would vote on it.
On that.
Okay. It's gonna be on there for us to vote on it?
You can raise the motion, and we can vote, or we can have it put on, but I think that was more procedurally than we were gonna get that done, right?
Any, any, any sports team, and right now, I believe there's only two or three sports that can win a tournament of champions. The board wants to do a 5,000, not to exceed $5,000 to purchase rings for a, for a team. Only teams, only teams that, that, that win the tournament of champions, so that would mean all groups, all, all states. So you're talking about, right now, I believe it's boys and girls basketball and bowling.
What about individual sports, like wrestling?
No.
Don't they win all?
No. The thing, the, here, here's how it came up. It came up, and we, we have a team that's done something that no other team in the history of Lynnhurst has ever done. And we didn't make any compensation for helping them at least get jackets or rings or something. So while we were there, after the Commissioners' meeting, I took a quick polling, if everybody would be amenable to an amount of money that we could give them, so they could get their rings, get their jackets, whatever they want to use it for. And it was agreed upon that we would give up to $5,000 to any team for that purpose, whether it be rings or jackets. Because, I mean, if the track team ever did it, you know, with 150 kids, we'd be bankrupt. But up to $5,000, at least those teams, which no other team in the history of Lynnhurst has ever done, could now go out and get rings and jackets. And I just thought it was basically pretty poor if the Board of Education didn't recognize their accomplishments, so.
But I was under the impression that it was tournament of champion teams, which is, so right now, it only consists of three sports, correct? Or am I incorrect?
Number one in the state, you have to be. That's what we said. Number one in the state.
Right. So there's only. So there's only three sports that could actually do that.
That's right, that's what I'm getting.
Yeah, right.
Coach, I was just asking, wrestling though, you can't do that like on the individual sports where they win like Donnie Crissol for the state?
No, you have to do it as a team.
So it has to be a team, not an individual?
Right. Well, hey, listen, if we go down there and there's another Donnie Crissol and he becomes the state champion.
That's what I'm saying.
We'll buy him a ring.
Why does it have to be a team? Because if it's a, if it's a one person and they're doing the same accomplishment.
We were just concerned about the three teams that could do it and, and one of them is track.
So why not, yeah.
So we'll, we'll talk about it on Monday.
No, why don't you mention it out, that was a good idea.
We've had national, are we keeping it just to sports or?
No, no, we brought it up.
Because that national FBLA.
Right, we brought that up, that was brought up. Okay, it's not, it's not exclusive of anyone.
So that would be a procedure, right?
That's right.
Well, I, I didn't know.
No, watch the chapter, just the order for proper verbiage and then we'll just make it the verbiage specific.
Tournament of Champions and National Champions for clubs.
Because we have the big teams and the whole nine.
Right.
It would have to be policy though, right, if this is a policy?
It would be a procedure.
It can just be a procedure, okay.
All right.
I just want to acknowledge Luann Vosen. She was selected to sit on the PARC State Mathematics Content Item Review, which is very prestigious. So she's going to be, heading to Chicago to analyze some of the math items that did appear and will appear on PARC assessments.
We have any motion?
So we're done?
No, but we have to go, we have to go on the examiner's session.
Nothing.
Yeah, I have.